I know. So we're gonna call to order the October eighth, twenty twenty four town commissioning for the town of Oakland. Please rise for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States and to the Republic which stands one nation under the law. For that, Father, we call this even to say thank you, thank you, thank you. Truly, thank you for this night, Lord, and let us be similar ourselves in this house. Father God, we know that there is storm out of motion and it's headed this way. But Lord, we know that you have a voice to say peace be still.
Amen.
And all our prayers and prayers secure days. And Lord, a lot of these things, when we have been there, they happen in bad, as we say, and we just be more obedient. Lord, we thank you for this community, Lord, with our teenagers, with the blood of Jesus. Not only this community, Lord, but just some of each and every community. But Lord, we acted as special requests. I know that don't even have homes or shelters to go into, Lord, home is pretty good. Lord, there's so many times, Lord, don't know which way to turn, don't know which way to go. Help us to be the neighbor that we should be in times like these. Lord, just thanks for each and every one on the side of my voice. Help us, Lord, that we can be able to help someone. Help, don't let a living be anything, let a light so shine, shine and shine. And Lord Jesus, we know when you left on the water, which you designed us, the waves, the wind, Lord, and you said, peace be still. And Lord, we want to say, peace be still tonight. Peace be still tomorrow. Help us, Lord, help us, Lord, we crying out help for you. Help, Lord, help this evening, and we want to give you the thanks. Thank you, Lord, thank you, Lord, thank you, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, very good, thank you.
Thank you, Father.
Okay, Elise.
Hey, Commissioner McMullen.
Where is that?
Commissioner Pollan.
Here.
Commissioner Ramos.
Here.
Vice Mayor Satterfield.
Here.
Eric Taylor.
Hey, I'm here. Right, so uh, going to a quick here, so we have a couple of proclamations. Uh, the first one is probably the most important one, and it's the declaring another state of emergency, local emergency, Hurricane Milton. Um, I did under my council sign uh, word earlier. Um, so there is a um, some language we need to read to adopt that uh, order.
Right, so what we're actually doing is ratifying the proclamation. Um, so whoever would like to make the motion, I can give you the language. Would you like to make the motion?
Make the motion, uh, I move to ratify the proclamation declaring the state of a local emergency for Hurricane Milton, uh, effective October seventh, twenty twenty four.
Selecting them. All in favor? Uh, okay. Um, just uh, since we're on the topic, um, let's real quick, briefly. Um, I know that everybody's probably been paying attention to the weather and to the news to see what's going on. Um, I've had the uh, pleasure over the last several days with this, with the previous storm and this storm, and attended all of the E O C meetings with Orange County, and hearing the updates. It's very interesting to hear the National Weather Service kind of come on and talk through things. Uh, you know, it, it's still an unpredictable storm. Uh, the exact landfall is yet to be determined. Uh, they feel that as it gets closer and, and you know, uh, to us, they, they don't have it. It, it is at the five o'clock uh, uh, latest uh, briefing. Uh, it did shift south. Uh, that doesn't mean that round the woods by no means is a pretty large storm, so um, the further south we better will be. Uh, especially those boats in Tampa Bay uh, area. And uh, if it's south of them, it sucks the water out of the bay. If it's north of them, it pushes the water in. So um, you know, just, you know, crossing our fingers that it keeps going south uh, to them. So they are expecting the impact of the winds, I think, uh, Wednesday evening to start coming in. You know, they, they had recommended that residents kind of get your plates, your shelter and plates by noon tomorrow, if you, if you can. Uh, and uh, trying to get all your preparations done for thing in the morning. And uh, you know, just get inside and we'll, we'll wait it out. Um, Duke Energy uh, is on the call as well. They will, they expected uh, anywhere in the neighborhood of uh, something uh, hurts consuming power. They have mobilized sixteen thousand linemen who are on standby. And they're staging those linemen in the villages as well as over at Richie, Richie Brother Auction. I'm not sure if you guys, that is on twenty seven and nine four right there. Uh, so, so um, that's good to hear that they got guys standing by, ready, ready to go. Uh, as far as uh, the town, and Elise, I'll speak a little bit on the town. I think we're as ready as uh, we can be on staffs in. Uh, they, I, I, I've worked with them this week, and they've done a great job um, getting things together. So at least you have anything you want to mention.
Sure, so um, just to let you know, the town has handed out over two thousand eight hundred sandbags in forty eight hours. Um, Wednesday recycling has been canceled, so please secure your containers and cans, remove any debris from your curb. Um, after the storm, do not mix vegetation and household debris. Keep them separated in piles, or they may not get picked up. Um, and then we encourage everyone to follow on Facebook, but the town website is updated with all of the most accurate information regarding town operations. Um, Jessica Lovejoy is our community outreach director, and she's done a really fabulous job keeping that website updated. I've, I've let the staff not be here tonight so they could prepare. Um, so she's not here, but um, she's been working really, really hard. She came up with a list of important numbers um, that are on our website, but there's also handouts here. Um, so that you can have our important numbers of who to call and at what points. So everybody's been working really hard. Um, Public Works Director Parker has been working exceptionally hard above and beyond. He went and scrounged sandbags yesterday after work so that we could have them this morning to hand to our residents. So um, everybody's been working hard, and I want to mention that um, staff have said they've noticed the neighbors helping neighbors. So I know the Holesworths were out helping at the sand pile. Um, you know, we had got some pictures of them.
I'm doing my best work.
Yeah, at the sand pile. Um, so, so we really appreciate everybody that stepped up to help their neighbors out during this time as well, the prep.
Yeah, so uh, and I've, I've gotten calls and, and, and texts and emails about water. Yes, water service is, is good down, sorry, as public water service. So as long as the uh, power stays on, you'll have water. Um, power goes off, we have a generator, backup generator that will uh, still supply uh, water uh, to residents. Um, we do ask that uh, or like Parker's already asked, and uh, you know, you turn off your irrigation systems. So if you uh, tomorrow maybe turn it off because there's a reason why they're getting the rain coming in at this time. But uh, you know, that would help save stress on the uh, generator running and fuel and, and everything like that. Uh, you know, there, there is a very, very high likelihood, like ability that we're going to lose power. And whether we have power, how long, who knows? But uh, you know, going back to what Duke said, they, they, if the storm goes straight through, it's gonna be pretty, pretty bad in, in their mind. Uh, and I think Town Hall, uh, just for residents to know, Town Hall is uh, closed tomorrow and Thursday, and uh, planning to open Friday depending on the situation with power from Town Hall and stuff. So sure, Jessica will post something on the uh, website. Uh, essential personnel from town staff and coworkers will be there at any party as well, this is her.
Yes, starting cleaning up, yeah, damage assessments. Same with um, Oakland Nature Preserve will be closed Wednesday, Thursday. The school is following O C P S this soon. They'll be closed Monday through Friday for hurricane and Monday for um, a school day, uh, teacher work day only. So they'll be closed all the way now through Tuesday.
Yeah, so uh, with that, does anybody at uh, Commission have any questions or concerns for?
I would add to what Ms. Marilyn Mack's prayer was. You know, during this time, I know it was, you know, we've been helping each other. Like, you know, everybody at the sandbox has been helping each other with the neighbors. But as I, as the mayor said, the, for sure, you know, we're gonna have electricity go out for a lot of us. And that's gonna became, become, you know, people are gonna get irritated, upset. And I asked, like I said, show love, this is the time to show love to your neighbor. Have patience, when you're hot on electricity, you know, you lose patience. But this is the time to really show who Oakland really is down deep, you know, in our spirit of loving our neighbor, helping each other out, no matter who it is, and uh, working through this. There'll be trees that may not be on your yard, maybe on your neighbor's yard. If you have time, you have energy, go out and help. You know, this is the time to show it. That's what I'm asking, and then hopefully we get to shine.
Yeah.
After the storm.
Well said, thanks. Anyone else? All right, so we'll move on to this uh, other proclamation we have with Florida City Government Week, and um, I'll, I'll read through it. Um, this is Florida City Government Week, whereas municipal government, wow, we're storming municipal government. Uh, is the government closest to most citizens and the one with the most direct daily impact upon its residents. And whereas municipal government provides services and programs that enhance the quality of life for residents, making their town their home. And whereas municipal government is administered for and by its citizens and is dependent upon public comment, commitment uh, to an understanding of this many responsibilities. And whereas municipal government officials and employees share the responsibility to pass on their understanding of public services and their benefits. And whereas Florida City Government Week offers an important opportunity for elected officials and town staff to spread the word to all citizens of Florida that they can shape and influence this branch of government. And whereas the Florida League of Cities and its member municipalities have joined together to teach students and citizens about municipal government through a variety of activities. Now therefore be resolved that by the Town of Oakland as follows. Section one, that the Town of Oakland encourages all citizens, town government officials and employees to do everything possible to ensure that this week is recognized and celebrated accordingly. Section two, that the Town of Oakland encourages educational partnerships between town government and schools, as well civic groups and other organizations. Section three, that the Town of Oakland supports and encourages all Florida city governments to actively promote and sponsor Florida City Government Week. And therefore, I change Taylor by virtue of authority vested me as mayor of the Town of Oakland, Florida, on behalf of the Tower, entire Town Commission to hereby proclaim October twenty first through the twenty seventh as uh, Florida City Government Week. So, very much, and I think everybody received, I think you said, you pen?
Yes.
Came in your mailbox, so. Um, I'll wait for them, uh, we'll move on to that. Does anybody in the audience have any questions or comments? No? Okay, here we go, we'll both call it forward and move to the consent agenda, uh, which is uh, consent agenda. Item A, minutes from the nine twenty four, twenty four town budget meeting, a hearing. The minutes from nine twenty four, twenty four Town Committee meeting. And the uh, last one is uh, O A C S out of field assignments uh, that was inside the package as well. So any questions or comments? No? Okay, make a motion.
Make the motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second?
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 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 okay. Uh, Elise, you want to do the auditor selection committee, or?
I can do it. Um, so on August twenty seventh, um, twenty twenty four, members of the community were selected to participate in our auditor selection committee. Um, we received four proposals, and the committee met three times throughout the month of September. We'd like to thank Mayor Taylor, Ken Bresnanhan, Scott Gordon, who's in the room, and Steve Stanford for their time commitment during this process. Um, there were some rules that we had to follow, and then the committee reviewed each proposal, carefully ranked them based on their firm qualification, experience, management and staff experience, methodology and pricing. The committee discussed the pros and cons of each firm and gave their three firm selections. And then we brought in the top two firms to make thirty minute um, in-person presentations. And then members of the committee were able to ask questions and get those clarified. And the Auditor Selection Committee recommends selecting Purvis Gray as the town's new auditor. Purvis Gray rankings were in the high nineties, and the selection committee was extremely impressed with their in-person proposal. Um, and then, so we need to kind of, it's a kind of a two-part motion um, to approve the selection of Purvis Gray as the town's new auditor, and then authorizing the town manager to execute any necessary documents in order to contract with Purvis Gray.
Okay, so the first one is to?
It's, it's, you, it can be all one motion, it's just it has both parts on it.
Wouldn't look like making a motion on selecting Purvis Gray as the auditor?
I'll make a motion, select Purvis Gray as the town auditor.
Second? All in favor? Aye. Yeah, that was very good.
Okay, we also need to offer as town manager to execute the documents for the contract. Do you want to amend your motion, Commissioner?
Another motion or what? Yeah. To add, to allow the town manager to go ahead and make this selection.
Sorry. Second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Who was the second? You, okay.
All right, so uh, yeah, so, um, uh, again, thank you to the residents who participated. Uh, it was, it was a big help, um, a lot of, let's say, excellent experience on uh, on this. So it was, it was very good, very good to see the insight of how that, how that works, not a job I want to do, but uh, you know. Uh, it's a special person to do auditing. Um.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank, yeah, thanks.
You're here in the audience, you.
Yeah. Um, and also your package, just so that no one is alarmed, or anybody in the residents as well. You know, every year the water rates saying releasing go up. This year it's going up three percent, and it goes up, you know, five percent, what was it, eighty percent? So this year, I think the water rates are, are going up uh, three percent, just want to mention that. Um, now move on to town manager and department reports, please.
Yeah, the only additional thing I have is we do have um, a schedule for the installation of the new A V system in here. So we're gonna be trying to get that taken care of, there's kind of two parts to it. So last week of October, first week of November, um, and then we hope to have it up and running for our November twelfth Town Commission meeting. So that's, that's exciting for people that are online, it's coming. Um, and then um, just letting you know, as you probably would have expected, the farmer's market's canceled this Thursday. This one will not be rescheduled. Um, we didn't have a huge turnout for the one we rescheduled previously, so we're just going to stick with, uh, we'll still have one. Um, you know, as usual, the next, the next, not next Thursday, but the one after that. Um, and then registration is open for Trees of the Season, so anyone who's interested in that can seal in at the Arts and Harry Center. That's all I have.
Okay. Um, anyone on the Commission have anything they?
Do you want to?
Oh, sorry. Sorry, I apologize. Oh, yeah. Hey, Derek, how are you? Hi, Chief, how are you? Hey, how are you? Good. Um, we, thank you. Uh, we have scheduled, rescheduled the five K that was supposed to be this Saturday, November seventeenth. We've been putting it all over our social media, and we contacted all the sponsors. Um, I think the PD is more than prepared for this storm response. The only thing we would ask is, when the storm does pass, please allow for Public Works and the Police Department to go survey the damage. Uh, residents should not be out in the town trying to film things and take pictures and see what happened, because there's our, there are dangers that can still be out there. So let us go out there first, make sure everything is safe, uh, and then the residents. Uh, Sheriff Amina and Mayor Demings are meeting tomorrow to discuss the possibility of a curfew. There, they will be giving that decision on. I believe the one o'clock call that's gonna be tomorrow that we got the email for. Uh, if there is a curfew, it's really important that the residents abide by that and stay inside. Uh, it's for their safety and no other reason than that. So um, if they do, and I, I, I don't know if they're gonna do it or not, but if they do implement a curfew, please pay attention to it. And once the storm passes, curfew may still stay, and that's to allow everybody to make sure that um, all the infrastructure is intact, and everybody can get outside safely. So we'll take care of that. The E O C at our police department will be up and running tomorrow at eight A M. We'll be, we'll be on that one o'clock call with Orange County Government in, in there. I assume you guys will already be gone by then, but um, still be on the call. And um, we're, we're ready for anything that comes our way. Mm-hmm. Great, Mike?
Uh, I echo everything that Chief said, it's very important, uh, you know, for the residents to not be venturing out and, and there's all kinds of hazards, you know, we learned that with Hurricane Irma. Um, I feel like this is gonna be kind of a repeat of that with all of the, the um, vegetative material that'll be on the streets. Um, and those of you that live here know that you couldn't even tell where the streets were after that storm. Um, another important thing is uh, the um, uh, the separation of yard waste and tree debris, that sort of stuff. And then fences or house stuff or junk, they, they can't be mixed. If they're mixed, it'll, um, you know, we'll end up having to skip it, and it'll be picked up at some future date. But I mean, it could be, uh, you know, um, that's important. Water and sewer, as the mayor said, we're in really good shape with that. Um, so I think, you know, uh, as he said, uh, we're, we're ready for anything that comes up, and and we'll get through it one way or the other, no problem. Get your best, get your best team there.
Yes, sir. Bags, you were going to.
We do, we do have uh, sandbags for you all, uh, and I'm really good at fortune signatures, so you don't have to sign. And then if anybody from the audience would, uh, you know, would like uh, sandbags, um, they're available.
Can you fill some of them, deliver them to my house?
Uh, no.
You'll be busy at mine, sorry.
I'll find somebody to help you.
Man. All right, thanks. All right, um, to me the Rock, we, except we all want to drive me back.
Swipe's pretty strong, though, you know, I'm sure she could help.
Yeah. Okay, uh, moving on to uh, the Commission reports, Mayor report, you know, something you have anything to do with?
Before I start, Deputy, you wanna talk about the E V now, or?
I did, um, because the mayor wanted to, it was two-fold really, but the mainly was, was to get the town ready. Um, we're moving towards electric vehicles, and when you come to your revenue when Shaver fifty, if you're gonna put in your apartment complex, residents are shopping or whatever, just like we used to have to do handicap spots, we're gonna be mandated to do electric vehicle charging stations. So it's something that we have to start thinking about and put into our code. Um, they're gonna suggest that you have so many electric parking spots for whatever you build, okay? The second part of it was a, an opportunity that came up, and I think the Commission had the same idea. Going off what the mayor said, uh, last commission meeting, I think, was he was talking about putting cell phone towers on our, if the town has any kind of strange pieces of land that we own that we can't really build on because of its, you know, it's kind of just owned land. The turnpike, as we're seeing today, that's sort of evacuation from down south. And we're gonna have more and more electric vehicles coming up that turnpike with mandated, you know, evacuations. Little strip of land on there, what they, what they're proposing is that somebody is gonna be most likely be an investor, it could be the town. You put in those charging stations, and it's passive money, we would get the electricity back, plus a little bit of a problem. And it's a piece of land that we can't use otherwise, or sell for anything else. It could literally be a strip, you know, with, you know, when you come off at a, a rest area, and everybody pulls in sideways. You know, if everybody could pull into like twelve, you know, like, or we could add, we could do six and maybe twelve more, maybe back up and get back on the turnpike. Um, because in fact, we're just, I was thinking about you with easy money, but the same idea is we're gonna have to go.
There you go.
We're gonna be mandated to go that route and have these stations. And um, if you think about that empty lot next to seven eleven down there off of Remington, something like that, some, somebody's gonna come in there buy that and put these in. So we, it was just an idea of the Commissioner I had, I talked to the town manager about it, it was like, hey, if you want to take out of the box with a strip of land that we can't do anything with, it's, it's, it's very little overhead.
So it's not if, it's when.
Yes.
And it's most likely that the E Vs are gonna be here in the future to stay. And the mayor of uh, Winter Park is taking full advantage of it. They used to be free, now they're profit centers for the town, for the city, so eventually might as well help, you know, anything else we need for our, you know, extra money for our staff, for our police, whatever we need, so.
And even talked about going into residential areas. They want the residential housing codes to have, uh, you know, and you used to rough in a, a sink for your garage, and rough in the gas for an outdoor area. They want us to rough, they're gonna say that they're gonna make us rough in electricity for E V cars, because it costs so much after the building. So it's something we're gonna look forward to to get ahead of with our codes, and then also make a little money.
All right, at minimum, the multifamily apartments will need it to have it already.
Are you, are you saying that's now mandated?
No, it's not, it's, this was.
Okay.
Before, this was a uh, policymaking, uh, this is what's coming in the future, and they're starting to go and put a pen and paper, but they're gonna pass it down to state level, but I think we'll move into that.
Yep. Yep, it's, it's gonna come, but that's good, it's very good.
I was discussing the N L C part about two or three years ago. Mm-hmm. So there, there, there are grant dollars on a national level to help facilitate that.
Yeah.
You still. Yeah, a lot of grants, yep.
Yeah.
And I know Duke is one of the companies that's supporting that.
Well, that's where we got our E V charging stations from originally, and then they stopped servicing those, so then we turned them over to somebody else.
Yeah, I, I will say that ours on every round town hall, there's always power. They can charge it.
No, they do, the company, the new company does, ChargePoint does, um, but they can reimburse us for electricity use in a percentage of whatever the proceeds are. Um, but just to be aware, during hurricane, we had the option of putting them in free, for free, like there, nobody has to pay to use them during this time. So if there's cars coming through from Tampa or wherever, they can just use them without being charged um, during this period.
Did we get any money back from that company for the electric use and stuff?
Yeah, that's why I was just saying, yeah.
Got it.
We just started doing the.
Okay.
Met with them, so like, we don't have a record of it yet, but we can, yeah.
So I, I know jumping on what you're saying, but doing that, I know City of Orlando mandates a certain amount of chargers per parking space you have in a shopping center. So if you have like three hundred spaces, you have to have X amount of playing handicap spots, you have to have X amount of char spaces for charging stations. Or exactly what you're talking about.
And based on what you're saying, I mean, like, the mayor over there in Winter Park, they were using the E Vs, the owners were taking advantage of the parking spaces on Park Avenue and using them to park there all day. So they came up with a uh, you know, a certain charge for an hour after you got there for the second hour to the, you know, first to the second hour was gonna be so much, and then after two hours, it would charge five times the, you know, most. So you, you didn't want to leave your car there for.
Enough to make you want to move.
Hundred dollar bill, like, makes you want to move it, or if not, you're gonna be paying.
I don't, you're saying there, you're saying money on that, yeah.
Right, right.
Right, that's pretty good. Uh, thanks, Tim, I appreciate it, thank you. Uh, anything else, Tom?
No, that's it, everybody stay safe.
Yeah, absolutely, Rick.
No.
What do you think? Just up the.
Just, you know, it's a hard time, we've been through a lot of these hurricanes, and he's my deputy, Elise and staff. You, you don't know how much we appreciate the job that you guys do on a regular day, it's hard to work here. Um, going through all of this, it's just, it's just, I'm just, I don't know, we all are, I'll speak for all, is very appreciative of the work that you guys all do to try to keep everybody in this town safe, so thank you so much.
They've been amazing, this, this group of, of people, including, I mean, everybody down the line staff have been amazing through this process. I mean, we're all working towards a common goal, which is to get it, it as prepared as we can for our residents, right? So everybody's been on the same page, like, there's, it's been seamless, really.
And it shows, and it will show even more as we get past the storm, and what you guys do so much, in fact, that I think that you guys are so good that we ought to draft up some paperwork to put Parker on another five-year plan, you know?
And second.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's all I have. Hurricanes. Uh, anything else?
Yeah.
Uh, I just want to put you guys in on a headshot, we had a meeting there last Wednesday, uh, people turn up. Uh, just a few things that the residents brought to attention that I think we ought to uh, consider and think about, maybe in the future, it is a good one. Uh, one of those items was Riley Farms, I know residents speaking about the um, on the street, uh, which is salad at Riley. There's a huge oak tree, it's an absolutely beautiful oak tree right there. And uh, so um, I've asked the town manager to have the developer make sure that they uh, uh, put tree barriers around that, like, you hit gum with wood, uh, to, to, second tree. Second of all, uh, if we can get the road that is proposed to go there staked out, so you see, I think there's from the residents that they've seen this so many times, that you say, oh, it's gonna stay, and the next thing you know, uh, guys out there in the bulldozer are pushing it, pushing it down. So um, I just, so I, I know that everybody here on this Commission, uh, sitting here today, you know, you're, you're not for cutting trees down, we want to try to save as many trees as we can, just kidding, we can only. Just kidding, we can only do that so much. Uh there are instances that I explained to them where trees do have to go, that they can't, they can't stay there due to the instructor and the utilities that are going under. But uh you know, you're, you need to put policy in place where we get if a tree's there, maybe there's a different way of a tree. So if you get a chance to drive around and want to take a look at it, it's a poller, but it's absolutely beautiful tree. And then there's another set of oats. Uh so what it's supposed to do is the poller and right before that tree, it turned west, it goes back to Jefferson uh Street is the those round the road, uh but um there's a set of, another set of oak trees there that are supposed to say there's some yellow tape around it right now. But I, I would make you feel a lot there as a developer kind of, you know, put some barricade around it to, to really say, hey, this is, this is standing, this is, you know, go a long way to the residents as well, uh stuff on that. Uh second thing was brought, which I thought was very, very uh interesting and, and, and this may be in collaboration with um um resident input in a, in a resident committee. And uh it's basically just, just preserving the historic homes that are in town and recognizing those historic homes. Uh you know, we have, we do have a lot of houses that are uh historic, um you know, even though you're not going to designate them as a national registry of historic houses, good if you wanted to. But um one of the ideas brought up was can open to a local designation of, hey, my house was built in eighteen eighty-seven and um you know, here's what, here's a little bit of background with it, so. And then possibly there's a way you do a plaque or something out front. And who knows, uh you know, uh I can find, I think the West Horn, or not, Winter Garden, um.
Heritage Heritageion.
Foundation is going to do a historic walk through Oakland on, on Saturday. Um so I, I, I think, you know, what I, what I try to stress to people is that Oakland is a very historic town. As it's old, it's been here longer than it ever. And uh I think it would be a great idea to kind of preserve those houses and, and, and have this. So there were a few um um people that would say, wanted to participate and stand up and kind of do that. I, I'm, I'm all open to having them uh put something together. Um Michelle Rio was, was the one who, you know, lives down here in the whole of town. Uh so she wanted, she wanted to kind of spearhead this and put this together and give the residents that do those houses a buyout. And I think it would be pretty cool to have a, a story for each house, maybe from the road perspective of the house, all that stuff. Uh, okay.
That would be cool. I'm just thinking.
I thought, I thought we used to have, it used to be some houses that didn't have that.
So uh Mayor Montgomery has made those little plaques. And there's one still standing in front of the tree that was now. But they had total ones that were true, I guess, probably over time, they probably.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea to get the up there, I mean.
Right, right.
They had it in the home right here off of Brock, right, and uh?
Yeah, and so that one was one, she, she, uh she was one of the uh residents that came uh Wednesday night. She was, yeah, absolutely into it.
Do we even have a count of more or less, how many?
You know, uh so.
Probably not.
Michelle Rio told me that it's, she thinks maybe ten or as well, but there could be more out there, you know? And it doesn't just exclude to this park, you know, you have the uh west side of town and anywhere else inside. I mean, we know what the former historic part of town is, which is here, but uh you know, I, I think it'd just be cool to have some sort of heritage historic trail, uh you know, that you would walk and, 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 you know, to kind of admire this. Try to conserve it, that's.
Like, you know, and when, in the old days, when we first started the um heritage um things in the park, didn't we have a tour of those old homes at long points or somewhere or after some of them? Because we used to take it, I think actually it was uh Mr. Montgomery that led the tour around, remember that?
Yeah.
Back in the day.
Yep.
So that's, I say a long time ago, but there's got to be something somewhere that will probably give it, give Michelle and them a good start.
Back in the ninety's, yeah, like ninety's, I remember that, you know, because they had more plaques.
Yeah.
Three of them. Yeah. Uh the uh third thing that was, I brought up and piggybacking onto those sort of phones was a um and, and we are working on this and this should be coming out very soon as our pre-ordinance update. Uh it's coming out, but uh creating a historic tree designation, uh you know, uh on a certain size tree that a lot of them wanted to try to get, where this tree is just designated as a local landmark and regardless of what you do, go away unless it's. So uh there are trees in town, I think that people say, hey, this is a beautiful tree. I mean, one of the poller trees one from all here.
Honest pier.
Well, yeah, that one down there, all those that run down to the pier. Uh so, so that was mentioned, those, those trees down there. And trying to designate those for me and saying, hey, this is, you know, this tree's here, it's not big it is and gets, it's fixed and stuff like that. So uh that was another um group that we wanted to do something like that.
So we had at one time or another, uh gentleman who took pictures of the uh grandfather oak trees we had here, made a book. I have the book.
We've got a calendar of them too, some.
Yeah, I ha, I have the book where he numbered them, named them. And some of them, I think probably about four of those out of the book have already fallen.
Yeah.
But uh maybe I can bring you the books so you can have somewhere to start.
Yes.
Yeah, it was uh Scott, uh I forget his last name.
photographer.
Yeah, Scott, uh he, he used to live over here and he, he did a good, it was really a good book and it was educational. Um it was uh, but that was, I think, right before Hurricane Irma that it was done. Um so we lost some trees during that and then, you know, there are trees that are, that have to be taken down because of, you know, disease or age or whatever, and some of those are gone too. Um.
So if you've got that book, I sell where it was trees.
Yeah, I'll get the book and then, obviously, you know, we would hear professional arborists, I mean, that's what I've had in mind. Uh and the two trees I have in my home, I, I bring them every four years and he pones into it, checks it to see the health, because sometimes they're inside rotten, we don't even know it.
Yeah.
So you know, I have an arborist check them and you're right.
Yeah.
And label them so nobody can, you know.
Yeah, right.
You know, starting with the one in Riley, if that was already part of the, you know, untouched, you know, sacred tree trees of Oakland, then you better make the road go around it. You're buying the property with a sacred tree of Oakland, you can't touch it, build around it. I mean, that's what we're trying to accomplish.
You should do that over there back behind the church.
Uh, yeah, we built the road around it.
Build a road around it. That's a good example of it.
Yeah, same to the rest of the three, you know, kind of go, gotta go around it. Um so, so those are just a couple of uh things, a few things that the, the last thing of the, uh which um is not is a um golf bar parade Christmas, like Leonard does. Uh and we left it was, that's great, it must be a resident-driven, right? Town staff would not. I'm sorry.
Jessica actually had a change of heart.
Oh, my.
So she's, she's going to work with Jill to actually organize it after Santa's Lane.
See?
And.
Yeah, it was like, absolutely.
So, and support it as a town function, so. Yep.
So, so the idea was to do a golf bar parade after Santa's Lane. Uh after that was done and then just go through town and stuff like that to time it's set a town would love, would be okay with it, the residents want to drive it. But if Jessica's doing that, the proposals now, uh so you know, I know that, you know, you got Oak Park now and a lot of golf, so I think it would be.
Yeah, she has a plan that.
Okay, good.
And we'll work, she'll work with Jill Cox.
Yeah, very good. Alright.
Looking forward to that a long time.
Yeah, so people, I think we're very, very, very into that, something like that. Uh other than that, I like that, guys. Alright.
I know.
Um I just wanted to let you guys know Stephanie was online this whole time too, oh, because she's been there, but.
Just one thing, um on the uh Melody Oliver's report with the uh employees.
Yeah.
Um the O N P ones, I know that they got all their four years, been there four years, but they, they've actually been there longer, like Jennifer's.
Yeah.
Seven years, Nicole, I think that's when the town took them over as town employees and not their actual.
That's correct, yeah.
So, so, so I, I saw that and I was, wasn't sure, yeah, I was, I recognize that they've been something that is, but how, but Jennifer's been affiliated for ten years.
Seven years.
Yeah, but the, the town only started paying for, for those employees four years ago.
And I know Nicole, like, like it was a week before, a week or two after Jennifer. Um so they, they all been here quite a long, you know, longer than the four years.
Yeah. They're all married in the same town.
Yeah, yeah, pretty good. What a coincidence.
So other than that, guys, um the bigger thing to go with this, everybody keep, keep tape out there and get through this quick. We can.
All hearts and my thoughts satisfied. That's adjourned. It is now seven forty-one P M.
Guys.
We want, you might.
Nah, you didn't get a record.
No, I don't.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah.